But that was an EDC only thing? Yes, sir.
We're here to cover it. I'm the CEO and founder of EDS Tech. Actually, I've expanded the project that we spoke about earlier to this area. We wanted to be able to do so. But today, actually, we got a signed agreement from one of the prime builders from GLOW. If you're familiar with GLOW, it's Texas General Land Office. That's who controls, kind of manages all the land in Texas. So when Hurricane Harvey hit, there were about 16 prides. One of the prides is interested in coming down and building, like on TexDOT. Every time some major project is done inside of your city and community, we offer the platform that the people, the citizens, students, or people in that community are part of that build-out process. And the city of Houston, they use Section 3. You're familiar with Section 3. It's kind of a similar process that the mayor's going to be introducing there as well. We're just going to take the workforce development platform. I am a veteran, so I look at veteran prep first. And I am a business owner, so I look at developing those businesses outside of your franchises, like Pizza Hut, because we feel like there's enough talent in your community to develop that and also leverage the tax dollars to use it. We've trained in Houston area. We've been in existence on the workforce development training. We were allotted $1.3 million to do workforce development training. This is also a national model. The tiny homes and container homes can be a project that is expanded with Prairie View University because that becomes a research development project. If you understand what that means, that means that if you started here first, you pioneered here first, guess what happens? Like with the stadium, people start to come. As you grow on 290, companies come. We can actually train the people in the community to meet that particular need. That's simple as that. We're here to support you.
Mr. Mohammed, would you share with them briefly the process? The container homes are going to come here.
Okay.
What you're going to do and where it's going to end up for the homeless veterans?
So for me, with container homes, you can actually see them off of Britton when you make a left more towards Austin to your left, you see those container homes. So what we would do when we take those container homes, and if you ever saw them altered, we alter them for homes, right? It's about 400 square feet. And it's for a single veteran or, you know, veteran in transition that can stay there. Then we would take that process. We would try to get some land off of 290 because we want to kind of showcase it, put some lights on it, let people see it. And it's four container homes. They come in four phases. It'll be a beginning phase to a completed phase. When we go into those particular container homes, we also tie the workforce development side to training. That means you learn as you go. Those container homes are then taken over to Liberty County, and they're actually put to use. We're going to film that whole process because what we're going to do is say, hey, we can take this process and it can actually go to other cities, other counties, but it can be bred here, right? Meaning when you give research and development dollars at Prairie View, Prairie View can then come back and still let the economy here.
And the part that you shared, I don't know if it was NBC or CBS, I forgot which one, but about the training, the certification that the people here would be receiving in the process of rehabbing the homes, allowing them to, whether it's Houston or somewhere else.
Right. It's a national credential. Right. So our certifications, our workforce development training comes with a national credential. Why? Because we deal with veterans and qualified candidates. And then fiber optics and infrastructure, it's a moving animal, right? With the NCCR, you can go anywhere in the United States. With the FOA and the fiber optics, you can go anywhere in the United States and in those countries to actually apply that skill. If you're familiar with fiber optics, if you travel to Houston, you see those little tubes hanging out the side of the road, well, that's AT&amp;T coming in connecting fiber optics. That's just like UP, a railroad station. And it arms off, where if you get someone who's, where you can train, actually go on his flights, you make about $25, $40 a mile. That's pretty much the pay rate. And they will pay you even to travel throughout Texas or the United States. They even pay you more because it's in high demand. I spoke, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We would be using the NCCR training to build out the container homes. So that would be part of the training process. And again, we currently have funding to bring an NCCR class out right now. I already have that funding dedicated for a class in Waller County available. And since our last meeting and presentation with the Economic Development Council have garnered an additional $250,000 from the Kellogg Foundation that we will be using for training. NCCR and other skills training that is nationally recognized is in high demand across the country. Corporations, foundations, I'd say governments are all looking at opportunities to build capacity within communities around providing jobs that provide livable wages. This is a really tremendous opportunity for us to work in conjunction with the City of Prairie View, with the university, with the Economic Development Council. I'm really excited about the opportunity.
And the Cooperative Extension Department, Mr. Jimmy Henry up on campus, the veteran's part of it. That's something that he's working with. And we're just starting getting them ready here. And then he's working with the lady who has the 50 or so acres in Liberty.
Right.
To set up the complex and that sort of thing. But the people that build them here will receive the certifications that your company's has been doing. And then they can go with the huge, they have a huge need in Houston for certified qualified people to rebuild so much of them.
Right. And it also gives you a skill set that you take. So as they build out on 290, that's transferable. Those companies that come in will then pick the citizens from the town to actually do the work the way it should be. Your tax dollars will be cycled back into the community. The other part of it is that with those container homes, those container homes can be shipped out. That actually is a business. So somebody in here is probably going to put something together, I'm hoping, right? To create that small business off of 290 that we're looking for as well. That's a hint. That's a hint. Well, it's the same, it's the manufacturing of the container homes. Like if you look at our mobile homes, just using as an example, our mobile home put up, mobile home park, it's the same thing. If somebody goes and building a container home, it's the same as building a home. The infrastructure's pretty much the same. On the outside is the good part of it. You can put that on back of a trailer and ship it out. Get my hint now? It could be a business that you ship out and move around and people make money and American tax you guys, taxes and salaries for all people. But, joking, but what we really would like to bring to the project, I will be going on CBS and NBC News discussing it a little bit more about how we can expand the project. It has so many facets to it with the stadium. Once that stadium being built, guess what goes inside the stadium? Fiber optics. We spoke about drone technology that is very hot. TWC has notified me that there's some more additional funding coming out for projects. I like everyone that stuff this way to support the community. That's it for me.
And I want to draw, you, council. I want to draw attention to the council, particularly item number four. This MOU is not intended to be a binding contract enforceable in court. Item three, this MOU is not a fiscal nor a funds obligation document. In other words, it is a memorandum of understanding. And they are going to the EDC asking, I think, for assistance in purchasing maybe an acre or two to set it up here. But other than that, the city is just going to benefit from the notoriety, the local folks who go through the training. Some of our students may want to go through it and pick up those kind of usable skills, depending on their major or what they want to do. But again, the project is going forward. The funding's already there to pay for the training. So this is just a memo that, as council has asked, I'm bringing a memo of understanding to the council. What questions do you have of these gentlemen?
Mayor, one more thing.
Yes.
Long-term counsel, this MOU would provide an opportunity for us to collectively approach the Texas Workforce Emission with a Self-Sufficiency Fund, which provides dollars for skills training. So again, our objective is to bring money into the City of Prairie View so that the community as a whole can take advantage of the opportunities. One, building capacity in your residence, jobs that provide livable wages. They'll be able to participate in all of the types of capital projects that the mayor has been implementing. The construction of the student house, the commercial construction, the construction on the Cricket Center as 290 continues to expand, funding from TaxDOT. So this is really just an opportunity for us to leverage tax dollars, our money, and bring it into the City of Prairie View through this partnership. So that is really the intent and the spirit of this memorandum of agreement.
Counselor?
So what would the outside appearance be like on these buildings?
Step over.
On the container homes?
Yeah.
No, ma'am. You can make the exterior look as opulent or luxurious as you would like. We do have some renderings, again, based on the national model in Dallas, Texas, that I think I may have shared with the mayor and also in the City of Austin. They take a container and, I mean, really, it is only as limited as your dollars.
So you don't have any of these projects actually on the ground?
For the container homes, that's correct.
Mr. Jimmy Henry with the Cooperative Extension Department was unable to join us this evening because of, he's out of town or something. But he's the one that has the actual drawings. But many of you have seen container homes. We just didn't know they were container homes because they totally... Where's your pictures?
I have some outside, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to see them.
Do you have one in your...
I do.
Yeah, pull that up. This building is actually building a container project just outside of Prairie View. It's in the county, actually, but close enough to connect to our water. But...
Absolutely.
That's what they'll wind up looking like. But the jobs portion and the activity and that opportunity to partner with the Houston Urban League is just, you know, kind of unique for us being out here. Because you're doing this in Houston already. It'd be nice to be included for change.
And this council member of our next, while we, this would be our first venture into the container homes. As I've mentioned, we've been providing these skills training since 2000. So this is not new to us, nor is it foreign. This program has been funded with several millions of dollars over that timeframe, working with, again, TWC, TexDOT, ExxonMobil, Valero, Houston Rabbit Transit, and the light rail system. Those are all projects that we were awarded and executed. We trained people that built all of those projects. So the NCCR training and credentialing is not new. The container home piece is. However, with our most recent Disaster Recovery Technician Program that we facilitated in partnership with EDS, we fully built out a, I guess, a home model with walls, insulation, electrical, where these individuals were trained in the mucking and gutting and the reinstallation of that. So that is really just an extension of building out a container.
Yeah, I have a few here for you.
May I approach? Counsel?
Yes, ma'am. That was exactly what I'm showing. The last part with the job training.
Right.
Okay.
They said our fund, you said our fund, right? How the outside would look, the fund that we have?
When I say our, I speak to the parties within the memorandum. I would not take that anymore.
But the big, the essence of this regarding the council and the City of Prairie View has directly to do with the job training component and all those things that come from it, whether it's new jobs, people spending money here, coming here, that component.
I pass. So with major companies that come in with the General Land Office is most companies, prides that come into a city or they build, typically it's custom for them to get people out of the community. What we would like to build is that platform to be able to train the people that are going to do the work and to help expand. The container home projects itself, once you see it and you see the phases of it, it comes in force, right? So we bring them in at the beginning stage. The same work in carpentry it takes to build a home is the same work in carpentry that it takes to build a container home.
So the exterior, did I miss you? I've been in the construction industry for well over 40 years. And as these gentlemen were saying, these exteriors are extremely attractive because you can make them into, a lot of people do custom projects with these shipping containers. And they're used all over the world. I've traveled to Amsterdam. I've traveled to Australia. I've traveled all over the world to actually physically see these container projects. And so they're absolutely beautiful.
Don't they have a significant situation in Austin?
Yes, sir. Austin is one of the most progressive cities in the state of Texas as it relates to construction and forward thinking. And there are more container projects in the City of Austin than anywhere else. They use them for commercial as well as residential construction. And these container projects have a lifespan of well over 200 years because of the structural integrity of the containers themselves.
Could we see your picture?
Hold on, we have a question from our council. Hold on, I'm in the audience, hold on. Thank you, sir. Just a second with that. Counselor Randall.
Okay, so my question is, as far as the job training, does the concept of the job training come always as the people who are going to be doing the construction on the projects? Where's the job training? Okay, so thinking about the demographics of our community, what are the requirements for someone who wants to, say, partake into training?
Over the many years, we have trained individuals that were unemployed, underemployed, dislocated professionals, individuals that are current welfare recipients, as Rashim indicated, Section 3 participants. It's really based on the individuals, their existing skill sets, and their desire to acquire a new skill. They have to have the acumen, of course, to handle the rigors of NCCR, which include construction math, blueprint reading, hand tools, power tools, OSHA 10 safety, and et cetera.
What about, say, ex-offender?
Well, being an ex-offender is not, I mean, that's not relevant to a person's skills or capacity. That just means that they found themselves in an unfortunate situation.
I just wanted to be sure that if I go and tell somebody that is a recent person, just got a job, and say, hey, there's an opportunity to present it to them, if they'd be able to come in.
We have trained many, many ex-offenders, of course. That is predicated, the job placement is predicated on the hiring or the employer and their protocol for engaging ex-offenders.
And from a time standpoint, I know you said Houston, Mr. Good, it's been since 2000?
Correct.
But the Los Angeles Urban League is doing this like in the 80s, well into the 90s.
Okay.
So the Urban League itself is how old?
Nationally, 105 years, celebrating 50 years in the City of Houston.
50 years?
Yes.
So what is the anticipated launch of this project?
Well, a lot of this is predicated on signing the MOU. Again, I already have the funding for a class. I can start with training 15 individuals in the City of Prairie View. And then we can, of course, expand it out as the opportunities present, of course. As indicated, we're working with Economic Development Commission to acquire the property, looking at potentially the existing mobile unit as an example. But again, I have the funding to pay for the first NCCR class. The Houston area Urban League's one.
Good way to put that, Eric.
So how long is the training period for the students?
We expedite our training period into a compressed two-week schedule, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. The third week is on job readiness enhancement. And then, of course, expanding out to construct the container homes will add an additional...
Bring away from about a week to two weeks.
60, 90 days potentially?
Yeah, depending on how we can condense and get that training as. Training typically goes about 200 hours. But again, it's on the skill set of the person.
And this will be the hands-on as they build out the container homes. NCCR is the same credential that is provided at Houston Community College, Lone Star, San Jacinto College. It costs per participant about $2,500. I'm able to provide that at no cost to my participants based on the funding that I receive. And that aggressively, over the past 10-plus years, millions of dollars we have garnered for the NCCR training.
So you said, just for clarification, you said that they receive a certification, NCCR training?
National Center for Construction Education and Research. NCC. Yes, sir. Nationally recognized, portable in all vehicles. Thanks.
So the class is compressed from 8 to 11?
Yes, of course. When we bring it out to Prairie View, we have the flexibility to frame that based on whatever fits the participants. Again, in Houston, we compress it. For individuals that are unemployed, we help them to get trained and certified within a three-week period. We run an end-of-session recruitment event, so we facilitate job placement within that three weeks. Our program has about a 76% placement rate upon completion. We have a 99% plus completion rate of program participants because of the front-end screening that we provide.
And Mr. Mohammed, with all the training you've done, the fiber optics and all those other things, there's really opportunities for us to expand in Prairie View in other areas after this gets up and going. Because when I watched those TV interviews, it was way past container homes. I mean, it just covered a lot of different areas. If you're able to get good jobs in...
Right, so we tie in with HDO, which is High Demand Occupancy, the state of Texas, you can look that up. And we try to identify jobs and place that workforce development training that will get people hired as quick as possible at the highest pay rate.
Counselor? Yes? Justice Jones? I move that we approve an MOU with the Houston Urban League, PDAM, Cooperative Extension, EDS Technologies, and the City of Prairie View, homeless, container home project, and local job training in Prairie View. I should probably move in second in that we take action to approve an MOU between the Houston Urban League, PDAM, Cooperative Extension, EDS Technologies, and the City of Prairie View regarding the homeless container project in Liberty with job training in Prairie View. For the motion, ready for questions?
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And let the record show, it's unanimous vote. Any objections? Thank you, counsel.
Mayor, counsel, thank you.
Item five, discuss and take action on the workshop date for public works. I also have a date in mind. It might be.
Is there any specific topics they're talking about in public works or to get some general...
I don't know. I read counsel wanted it. Discussion on public work? Okay, so we'll table a pass on that now. Would that be okay, counsel?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm moving that we move to the next meeting.
Second?
To properly move in second in that we table item five, discuss and take action on workshop date for public works to the next meeting. Ready for the motion, ready for the questions?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item six, updating on zoning map and discussion on district changes.
Tony Corle, did you have something to share there?
Just brief. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting in May. We cannot meet this month because of the way the election is following. There's no, there's just no way because of the night schedules of people. So we'll be meeting very, probably the second week of May to work on the zoning map. And Mr. Marshall Brown, the chairman, has someone who can come in and assist us with that on drawing the map and getting it updated. And any other further changes will come to council. So I just want to give you an update on that.
When the date is confirmed, daytime, can we should have it?
Yeah, we're looking at the second week in May after the election. So the Saturday is the fifth, so it'll be, working maybe that next Thursday or Friday. We're trying, those are probably the two days.
Can you email us a list? Will you email us a list of the date now?
Yes. Sure.
So, and typically, I know we don't have a forum of counsel there, so when, once you do that, you might want to post a potential forum, maybe present, that sort of thing, just to cover in case.
We can, yeah, we'll make sure if we have three show up, yes.
Okay.
But we can be there because it's not on meeting, though, right? We're not participating in the meeting.
You have to be careful about showing up in a forum when city business is being discussed. And so with the Planning Commission, we'd be discussing city business.
And the fact that it may come back to council.
And it will come back to council, yes.
Item seven, update on the $1 million James Muse Parkway grant. I touched on that earlier, so now, to keep counsel updated in meeting with the project manager and talking with the city engineer, this will be, and the communication from the feds in Austin, we're just about ready to put it out for bid. And we'll, I'll keep counsel apprised of that. But it's very close to going out to bid on who's going to do the work on installing that infrastructure, just about all the other paperwork. I's dotted, T's been crossed, been going back and forth with Ms. Lisa in Austin. Item eight, Waller County inter-local agreements. I spoke with the Waller County engineer, Yancey Scott, and just in terms of trying to kick off and get a couple of inter-local agreements going on things like the ditches on Azalea and Rosewood and Citywide, but also the Phillips Street asphalt paving. He and I have been talking about that and we're getting close to possibly doing something just before the Hurricane Harvey hit. And that kind of stopped everything. But basically, just trying to get some inter-local agreements started with the county. And this was some things that we talked about at a meeting where we were at for something else. Counsel, move it.
Okay, so Mr. Yancey, did they change their outline? Because remember when myself and counsel and Jones were trying to contact him, he had said that they were throwing away with the inter-local agreement?
Well, they're actually phasing them out. And this is year one. And I think it's a four or five-year phase. But they're phasing them out in terms of the participation of work they do and the participation of financial involvement on the city's part.
Did he ever send you the thing for us to sign? Because he said it was something that he was supposed to send that each city need to sign.
No, I'll get back with him on that. He didn't mention that in the meeting, but I'll follow up with him. But again, this is a part of just really letting counsel know for those reasons so that if there's something else you all can share with me.
Because he said it was a letter that he sent that someone signed for and that we needed to sign it. And we'll get it back to them, so.
And Ms. Dickey, would you make that note? So we can get back with him and find out what that is and have him resend it or something. Yes, counsel, move ahead.
Well, during the commissioner's court, the inter-local agreements that the cities, all the cities had with the county, those ended December 31st. And they have initiated new terms for their inter-local agreements. So all those have to be re-signed and re-issued about certain terms.
So we need to update it in any way? Okay. So we'll follow up on that and see what we need to do. I know the one thing was the percentages were being phased down and then eliminated over a four or five-year period. But again, that should show up in the new document. Anything else on item eight?
So you don't have any copies of the IAs? They have any terms or agreements on it?
No. I think that's what you said they said.
Yeah, that's what he had told me, that they sent it and that they showed a record that someone signed for it. And I asked him, would he be able to send me another one? And I called him about a week ago, and he still hadn't returned my phone call because he had said he was going to send another one. And I said, because we don't have it. It hasn't come before council.
So it didn't reference to what? So he didn't reference to, to what, IA, you referenced to what?
He said, because they were, it was letting us know that they was phasing out that part and then to let us know what the new process was gonna be, but they needed every city to sign off on it.
So we'll send an email. And let's copy the county judge, because I spoke briefly with him right after that, and, uh, let him know that, uh, Yancy and I have talked about them and that we'll just get whatever, uh, the current is, so we can take a look at it. We'll bring it to council, uh, before executing, just to make sure.
So that was actually during the time when I was inquiring about redoing Orange Road, and he never looked at it, so.
Well, I'll be going to commissioner's court on Wednesday and be there, I'll speak with him in Brooklyn Street.
Okay, and you bring it back to, okay, that'd be great. Um, anything else on eight? Item nine, uh, street maintenance, uh, citywide asphalt and tree trimming update. The city, uh, received the update on the Pine Meadow, Pine Island interference. That was about nine, maybe ten months ago, uh, before Mr. Hall took ill, as well as the update on the, uh, tree trimming. But the street maintenance, uh, with the tree trimming, um, asphalt, tree trimming. Mr. Johnson, what else is in that category in the budget?
Lot clearing.
Lot clearing?
Right.
Okay. Now, is that lot clearing where we cleared a lot and put a?
Put a lane on it.
Yeah, I was just saying, you said that, not me. I'm just checking on it. I just wanna understand what you mean by lot clearing, so I understand. But it is a, it is a, uh, a budgeted item.
Yes.
And the budget, uh, of course, is, it's counsel that approves the budget. So these are things that, uh, have or were being done. I know Mr. Hall is working on what counsel requested, more or less what it would take to do the rest of the city so that, um, we can bring that back before you.
And he's probably bringing us a cost of the invoice of the work that's already been done?
Well, that, that invoice he brought, and that invoice.
No, he gave us an estimate, he said it was roughly twelve, fifteen thousand, but he never brought an invoice.
Okay, well, he brought the invoice, and the invoice has been taken care of. So he brought that. That's a budgeted item. That is no different, uh, let me say, since I've been in, we bought a backhoe under contract that was in the budget. We bought three police vehicles that I had to sign contracts for in the budget. We bought two Ford F-one-fifties that I had to go to the dealership and sign the contracts for. We went to another dealership and picked up the Ford Explorer. All of those were budgeted items, and once their budget is approved, then it's just implementation. All those things don't come back before council. Council approves the budget. The budget was approved. This stuff was in the budget.
How much is in that line item of the budget?
Eighty-four, five.
How much did we spend?
Uh, I haven't seen the invoice for it yet.
But originally, we had a hundred and twenty-two thousand, right?
Well, in the budget, you got eighty-four, five, but from a, uh, looking at the, the cash in the accounting stuff, see, we have some funds that we can carry forward. You have like a hundred and thirteen thousand funds in there.
So we have a hundred and thirteen, not eighty-four?
Well, no, the budget is eighty-four. What I'm saying?